Okay, everyone, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we stand and say the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Can I get a moment for silent prayer and meditation, please? Okay, next, can I get a motion to approve the April tenth, twenty twenty-three agenda, please? Okay, and as part of this, I'd like to move, or for a discussion, we do discussion next, right? Yep. Okay, I'd like to delete ten point oh three, which is the discussion regarding the Jerome. Let me read it to you. Ten point oh three for the discussion regarding the Jerome and Union County proposed and existing tips. So Dr. Miller is going to cover everything that will, you need to know in his superintendent report. Under that?
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mr. DeLion?
Yes.
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 Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. DeLion?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
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 Okay, next on the commendations, Dr. Miller, take it away.
So this is our fourth month recognizing our outstanding teachers and employees in the district. This is our Excellence in Action Staff Recognition Award. And this month, we will be recognizing Mrs. Emily Byers. If you would say that, please be recognized. I'm gonna have you stand for a second. I have a few things to, to read, okay? Mrs. Emily Byers, STEM facilitator at AWS Think Big Space. Mrs. Byers plays a major role in the lives and education of all of our students, ages twelve. So we asked this question, how does this employee exemplify the district's one work theme together? She works with principals and teachers in every building in the district to plan STEM lessons at the Think Big Space, incorporating what students are working on in the classroom, and to help teachers provide their own STEM lessons in their buildings. Just one small example of Emily's dedication to this, she spent hours, including on the weekend prior to Thanksgiving, to plan for lessons for Monroe's STEM days in spite of the fact that she had COVID. Recently, she created a proposal, which the school board approved, to expand the Think Big Space with a large donation from AWS. Emily is an active member of the Professional Development Planning Committee, and has been an integral team member in planning PD beyond this committee. She also serves on the MAP Committee and is student-centered in all of her approaches and lessons. Congratulations, Mrs. Emily Byers.
Next, we're gonna move on to athletic commendations. I'd like to invite Mr. Scott Rule, our athletic director.
Thank you for having us and our athletes. The first group I'm gonna ask to come up is our boys and girls basketball players and their coaches. So Evan and Peyton, just come forward. Julio and Coach Dicky, Coach Jackson. So tonight, we have with us all of our athletes. All of our athletes that have received any type of state love and recognition. So this time, I'd like to begin with our basketball players. First, just a little bit about Evan. Evan was first team All-CBC, pretty much unanimous choice among teams in the league. It's the second time that she's received that award. She was a High School Basketball Coaches Association, District Ten Coaches Association Super Team, which is a great honor in the Central District. In addition to that, she was also first team All-Central District. This year, being her junior year, she averaged sixteen points a game, three point seven rebounds, and one point seven assists, and just had an excellent year, and also received an Odomentional Ohio, which is why we have her here tonight. I've looked at some of the points and stuff today, and both these kids were in the mid-eight hundreds already as far as scoring. So two kids that have pretty much played since they were freshmen, played a lot. So congratulations to Evan. Give her a round of applause. And then our next one is Peyton Heiss. Peyton also was first team All-CBC, another unanimous selection. This is also his second time receiving that award. In addition to that, he was the two thousand twenty-three, a part of a Central Buckeye Conference Championship team, and that was our fourth straight. Third for him, because he's only a junior, but a fourth straight for our program. In addition to that, he played in the All-Star Game, the CBC All-Star Game, and was then the MVP for the All-Star Game. He averaged seventeen points, six points a game, three point one assists, and seven points, six rebounds. He was a second-team Central District performer. And in addition to that, another Odomentional State recipient. So two kids that are both juniors, both be coming back. Awesome stuff. But I'll give her a round of applause. Walker, if you could go and take pictures with them?
Yeah, once you guys stand right in front of the school board there.
We won't be able to see that.
Athletes, over. Here, let me do this. Once you guys come around here.
Athletes in the middle now.
Hey, you guys get to scoot together. Don't let us scoot together more. And maybe scoot up to the chairs a little bit.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, our next group is our boys and girls swimmers. So we have Lily, Lily, like, your mom, and okay. So again, two swimmers, both at opposite ends of the spectrum here, one freshman, one senior, but two athletes that have an excellent year. So just a little bit about Lily Ferguson. This was her freshman year. She was a CBC Champion in the two hundred thirty and also in the hundred back stroke. In addition to that, she's a sectional champion in the one hundred back stroke. She was second place in the district meet, which made her an automatic qualifier to make the state tournament, which is something that's pretty rare for a freshman to be able to do, to be able to be an automatic qualifier and make it to the state tournament. When she got to the state tournament, she ranked fourteenth going in, made it to day two, which again is impressive. And then on day two, finished ninth in the two thousand twenty-three Division Two State Meet in the one hundred back stroke. So amazing accomplishment. She was our first female swimmer in JD history, not just to make the state meet, but to be there and then place ninth. So congratulations to Lily. And then we also have Eli. I'm sure, I've got a list of stuff here to talk about with Eli, but I'm sure if you live in our community or follow us up, you've heard a lot about him. But anyway, Eli is a senior, so kind of last opportunity we get to recognize him and say congratulations on a great career. And when you hear some of this, it'll make you kind of think that back, you know, I know coaches told me this a few times, they don't see people like this every day come through. Eli is an eight-time CBC Champion. In addition to that, he was the two thousand twenty-two Swimmer of the Year. He's won eight district championships. And just thinking back on that, this is as many as you can possibly remember, because you can only be in that many events and win it every time. In addition to that, in two thousand twenty, he made the B-two State Meet, and he placed sixth in the two hundred IM and fourth in the hundred back stroke as a freshman. In two thousand twenty-two, or twenty-one, again, he was fourth place in the one hundred fly, which was a good event for him. And then that year, which was his sophomore year, he was the state runner-up in the one hundred back stroke, which was his first time as a runner-up, and then there's many more to come. Two thousand twenty-two, he was the Division Two State Runner-Up in the two hundred IM and state champion in the one hundred back. And then in twenty-three, he was again the state runner-up in the two hundred IM and the state champion again in the one hundred back stroke, because he's a two-time state champion. So a huge accomplishment. In addition to that, he was, in two thousand twenty-two, he was a high school American. And what that means, that was in the one hundred back stroke, what that means is he was in the top one hundred swimmers in the country, no division included. So Division One, Two, Three, Four, and Everest State, he was the top one hundred swimmers in the country in that. In two thousand twenty-three, he was also a high school American, this time in two events. So he was a high school American in the two hundred IM and the one hundred back stroke. And if you've ever gotten to spend time with Eli or been around him, he's so humble with being able to do all this. The last thing I'm gonna say about him, when we were sitting down and talking about accomplishments, he wanted to add in that this year, our two hundred Bentley relay was their first CBC championship, which was the first time that he could do that with thirty teammates. So really, the state things were important, but I got to be a part of a relay team that was first in the CBC and also qualified for the district. And they also, yeah, they were also the Division Two Freestyle Relay and a second in the CBC, which again goes back to that team accomplishment, how important that is in our program. So to both of these two, again, congratulations. Lily's gonna be coming back. Eli's gonna be going to the next law, because he's going to Ohio State next year, which will be able to follow him in his career. Again, just like to say congratulations to both of them. Give them a round of applause.
I think we know not to have Eli standing in front of the board for a photo.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one.
Congratulations, guys.
See you next year, Lily.
Okay, next is our wrestlers. So all of those girls wrestlers are counted for. Okay, tonight, we're gonna have all of our wrestlers with us. Obviously, some came to me today and said, hey, I got, it's a busy time of year. We've got, we've got track stuff going on. We've got baseball, softball, tennis, lacrosse, work, everything else. So it's tough to get them all here. So I want to talk about all of them, but we do have seven of them that may be state tournament this year, of which looks like five are here tonight. But this was kind of a line-in-year and something new with girls wrestling. We don't have either of our girls wrestlers here with us today, but just a neat thing that the state added girls wrestling as an official sport, and both these young ladies are very good and have the opportunity to continue to advance. So prior to the fact that it was a sport, they were making that level already at the time it was sponsored by the Coaches Association. So they were already competing in that. But a lot of the wrestlers, our first one I'd like to talk about in the regional meet, she finished second place, and then qualified to the state meet, which is awesome to be a state qualifier and get to that level and have that opportunity. She did not place at the state, but had a good tournament, won some matches and did well there. So just super proud of her. And then our second girls wrestler is Ava Ader. She was also second in the regional meet and made it to the state tournament, and did really well at the state, advanced, had some great matches, and finished on the podium as a fifth-place wrestler in the state. So two young ladies that are our first, or everybody's first, really, since it's the first time with OHSAA, having a state placer that's a female in this first year. I think it's a program that'll just continue to grow and get bigger. So I'd like to say congratulations to both those two young ladies. Also with us tonight is five of our young men. I'll start with Zager Pierce. Zager had an excellent year this year. He was the sectional meet runner-up. He was the district meet runner-up as well. And then in the OHSAA tournament, wrestled really well. It was exciting watching him get to advance and have great matches there in the tournament. And just, again, that opportunity to make the state podium, and he's a senior as well, so getting to advance, get to the next level, so super, super proud of him. He finished fifth place in the state. Our next one is Oliver Byerly. Oliver has had a great career in wrestling. I'm sure, again, if you follow, you've seen just some different things about him. He is a two-time, sorry, he's a three-time state tournament qualifier, but his sophomore year, I understand, which I wasn't here then, but didn't get to wrestle in the state tournament because of an injury, which is tough. But then his next two years made it back to the state tournament and wrestled in the state tournament both years to be a state placer. But just a little bit about this season, he was a sectional meet champion, he was a district meet runner-up, and in the OHSAA state meet, he was a runner-up. So a state runner-up this year for Oliver, which is incredible, a great year. And again, he's a senior, so he moved on as well. Our next one's Damon Hay. Damon also had just a year that was fun to watch. He progressed a ton throughout the year and just got better and better. Damon was a sectional meet champion. In addition to that, he was the district meet runner-up and then qualified for the state. And in his weight class, I think it was pretty tough, had some tough matches, so didn't get to make the podium. But again, just to make the state tournament, have the opportunity to be there is something really special. Another senior, we're gonna be losing, but again, congratulations to him. And then our last two, Anthony and Dominic. I'll start with Anthony first. Anthony, again, is another classmate, will be coming back. What a great year by him. He was the sectional meet runner-up. In addition to that, he finished third in the district and also made the state tournament. And again, wrestled in a weight class that has some pretty good wrestlers in his, in his stuff, and didn't, didn't make the podium, but did qualify, and is going to be coming back and have an opportunity to do it again. So I think we'll see some special things from Anthony. And then lastly, to my ladies, Dominic. Dom was a sectional meet champion. In addition to that, he finished third in the district and then in the OHSAA state meet, he wrestled really well in some of those light rounds, had some close matches at the end, and finished fifth place in the state. So just a great year by, by, not just these five young men, but if I go back and talk team-wise a little bit, kind of a first, to my knowledge, anyway, we hosted the sectional this year, but not just that we hosted. Our team won the sectional, so we won the sectional championship. We finished as the district runner-up this year, which again is a huge accomplishment program-wise with our team and everybody all together. And then in the state tournament, as a group, they finished eleventh, which is a mark that we have not learned in the past and just a huge accomplishment. So I'd like to say congratulations to all these guys and the girls that are here tonight. Again, a line-in-year for them, so please give them a round of applause.
All right, here we go. Ready in three, two, one.
Okay, next is our bowlers. So both of them here. And also. All right, so next up is our bowling team. Obviously, we got a few of them to play softball. So we don't have a lot of them here tonight, but we will recognize them still as a group. I'm gonna start with Drew Darren. You're gonna need to talk to Drew, and need to know him a little bit. You learn really quickly, obviously, how competitive he is, but not just that, how funny and funny he is when you get to talk to him. This, he's a sophomore, he was, he was first team All-CBC, which our conference in bowling is really good. I don't know if you ever get the chance to follow how many of them make it to the state, and win the state, and whatnot, but to make first team in our conference is tough. A great accomplishment for him. His line of the year was a two-seventy-seven as far as his individual high game. In addition to that, as we got to talk a little bit, we started talking about three hundred games and things like that. And it's funny, because Coach Walter and I talk about this all the time, that for the average person, right, how hard it is to bowl three hundred different people to bowl. They're like always striving to, I'm gonna bowl three hundred, I'm gonna do it. So as I'm talking to Drew a little bit, he tells me that five times this season, he had games where he had eleven out of twelve balls and they were all strikes. And eight of those, or sorry, five of those was the, he had eight straight strikes, and then on the ninth ball, he left the seventh bin. And that, it was that same thing every single time. So imagine going five games in your season where you drew eight strikes, and then on the ninth ball, you always hit the seventh bin. As we're talking about and laughing about it, he says, I said, do you have a three-hundred games? He goes, yeah, I do, but I got one coming in the CBC. So again, it's that thing that bowlers, they just, it's what they strive to do. Drew's the district runner-up. He bowled a seven-thirty-four series in the district, which is a, your three-game total. If you do the math on that, you're like around the two-forty-ish average, which is, which is very impressive. Drew made it to the state tournament, and I knew from watching him in the stadium, we talked about, are you using people that were there, that he was really doing well? They know how well, we're just talking to them, and kind of where scores were falling, you got a good idea. But he bowled a seven-oh-five series in the state tournament, which is kind of the biggest stage as far as tough oil pattern, big environment, lots of crowd. And they do announcements at the end. And when they did announcements at the end, he was the state runner-up, but he was the state runner-up by two pennies. He kicked the deal goal with seven-oh-seven. And I know, again, he's a sophomore, so he's gonna have more opportunities. But to be there, to have that opportunity, to do that, was incredible. So again, a young bowler with a career ahead. Just like to give congratulations to Drew Darren. Next, we have our girls bowling team. I'm gonna read their names. They're not all here, but again, Daniel Fritz, Haley Henderson, Daisy Henderson, Macy Lane, Ella Cameron, and Jalen Moore. Their head coach is Coach Michael Walter, and their assistant coach is Russell Walter. If you know the Walter family, they're all, they're involved in bowling. They're back and forth, every one of them are coaching, everyone are involved in helping out. And this is like, I guess, to me, as far as watching them, and I continually tell people and say to them what a great job they do with teaching kids, encouraging kids, continuing to push them to get better. This state tournament team for the girls, they finished in the, they lost in the final four. But that being said, it was a group that last year, they lost, they were state runner-up and didn't bring everybody back. So this was a younger, as far as everybody willing to return. So this was a young group, it was dudes though. For example, in the CBC, they got second throughout the year, and they just kept getting better and better. When they got to the sectional, they finished fourth and advanced. When they got to the Central District, they finished runner-up and advanced. And then when they got to the state tournament, they made it into the after the round, into the, they, they, the top eight teams make it. And from there, it's a bracket, and eight into four, and four to two, and so on, until they have a champion. And they just continue to advance, continue to get better. They were seventh earlier than that, and won and advanced, got into that final four. This is a mixed group of young ladies. We're, I've been bringing a couple of them, but we do have a few of them coming back. But again, as I said before, whatever kids show up, they continue to keep advancing and be doing really well. So just like to say congratulations to our girls bowling team, and Drew, and our bowling brother, and Oliver.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one.
The best, the best of young ladies.
Last, but not least, our competition cheer team. There's eight of these young ladies with Coach Cochran. Again, they're sitting down on different things, and different stuff going on. They would be here tonight, but again, a remarkable year by these young ladies. And to look back at the past, they continually had good years over and over and over. They normally have the opportunity to get into that state competition, compete and do well, so super, super proud of them. I'm gonna read our, our team members. Haley Blandon, Mina Bellar-Lopresti, Ava Rapp, Josie Miller, Stacey Napier, Hannah Schott, Kara Smith, Abby Lewis, and our head coach is Haley Cochran. The competition season, if you haven't really been around it, it begins, like, we're on trials in May. And they get, they do a lot throughout the summer, but then pretty much when we get back to school in August, it starts right then. And they didn't finish until the state competition this year on March, what's fourth, maybe? So it's a very long season. That being said, again, they started out in August learning routine and choreography and everything. With that, and working out, and continuing to mesh together, who can be what, who has different skills so they can make their routine the best. Their first competition was the CBC competition, which was back November thirteenth. So that's kind of when their competition season got kicked off and began. In addition to that, that was at Indian Lake. In addition to that, they got into the regional qualifier, which was at Granville, and they advanced. When you go to the regional qualifier, they're not placed, but we say we were advanced, or they were advanced. So they advanced from the regional qualifiers to the state competition. And again, that was on Sunday, March fourth, where they finished in the OASSA Division Three, now building Division as the fifth-place team in the state tournament. So again, another group, whether that we do a few seniors, but we also have some freshmen, and some kids that'll be coming back, some building, and continue to get better. So another group that, again, just making that state level is something special to be able to do that. So I'd like to say congratulations to them. Thank you for being here, and give them a round of applause.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, congratulations to all of our athletes.
Yes, awesome.
Sure, we'll see you at work.
Good job, guys.
Yes, awesome. Good job, guys.
Give the call. Seriously, you could leave now. Okay, next, I'd like to invite Mrs. Page to give a presentation to Monroe.
Welcome to Monroe. So, thank you all for being here tonight. We have some wonderful kindergartners that we're going to showcase tonight. So, one of the things that we've been doing a little bit different this year at Monroe Elementary is something with our literacy program. We have been using Amplify, and we have been piloting it. We plan to pilot it again next year, because Amplify's materials and shipping was so far behind that we didn't get most of our materials until October or November. So, we're still piloting it, but I wanna brag on our teachers for just a second. Actually, I wanna brag on them all the time. But they, they not only were implementing a new math program this year, but when I went to them, we had been talking a lot about how we just didn't feel like what we were doing at Monroe was working for literacy. And when I went to them and said, like, "You guys, what do you, what do you think? I feel like we need to try something else, 'cause what we're doing isn't working." I, a unanimous vote of absolutely, what we're doing isn't working, and it doesn't matter to us if it's creating more work by implementing new literacy and new math. We have to do what's best for our kids, and we're doing it. So, I am so proud of them. And I, and from my perspective, the way we're seeing in the classroom with Amplify is so impressive. And what we're seeing in our kindergartners has just been mind-blowing. So, tonight, they're gonna show you a very quick activity. It is called chaining. And what they have done this year so far is they have learned the letters and identifying them. They have learned the sounds, and now they're putting them together to make words. So, they're gonna show you just a real quick snippet, and all of our, our two teachers. Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Pock, you know which take over.
I'll put these here, okay? We're gonna do the big cards first. Yeah. Why don't you guys, why don't you guys say, "Right here," and then they can walk up to you. Sure. Here, I'll sit right here. Okay, some of you are gonna get two. Alright, and then when we make the word, you're gonna come over and sing by us, okay? You ready? The first word is chimp. So, if you have any of the letters in chimp, you're gonna make one. Alright. Now, can you change it? We're gonna change chimp to chip. So, can you change one thing in chimp to make it chimp? Okay, now you're gonna change, change it to ship. There you go. So, now we have ship. We're gonna change ship into shop. Okay, now change shop to pop. Alright, we're gonna change pop to pup. Now, change pup to pump. I have to help her. There you go. Alright, last one. Alright, we're gonna change pump to thump. To thump.
I have that.
We're gonna show, will you show one of you people? Yeah, we tell you? We're gonna, we're gonna do the chaining on the iPads. And you're gonna just pick one person up there, and you're gonna show them, we say a word, and make that word. Okay? Come over here. Go grab an iPad. There should already be one. So, why don't you go to the first one? Make sure you press the finger up.
Yeah, don't push the mouse.
Just pick one person that you wanna show to, okay?
There's one person on the board.
Are you gonna show me? Okay.
Right there.
What's your name, sweetie?
Okay, are you ready for the first word? Okay, the first word is ship.
Remember, what do you hear in ship?
Good job.
So, what do you hear?
Do you like to throw it in?
Remember, it's like gross. Ship. There you go.
What do you do with it when you're done?
I know. I'm gonna, she's still going. There you go. Alright, you're gonna change ship to dip.
You know what? I brought a cure. I was gonna say, but it's okay. It's our job. Okay, are you ready for the next one? Chain dip to dish.
So, remember, don't, don't, just push the trash can. Don't push the other one.
How do you, how do you get a password? Do you know how to get to the password?
Why don't we just do one more?
Okay.
Okay, if you're still, change dish to dish.
It's capital N. Sorry. Yeah, they had to make it difficult. That's okay. We're gonna leave it.
Alright, if yours, if yours kicked you out, it's okay, 'cause you're on the last one anyway. After that one, it's a, you could just tell her how to spell fish.
Yeah, can you tell her how to spell fish?
Fish?
F.
Let's see it. What do you got?
I.
Very good. That's awesome. Good job.
Good job. Good job.
Nice job. Alright, once you have fish, you can double-click and swipe up, and you can, you're done. You can take a bow.
So, as you can see, they have learned a lot this year, and some of them have already started reading whole words and sentences, and they are well on their way to wonderful first graders this year. So, thank you again, kindergarten parents, for having your kids here tonight, and we appreciate your patience. So, thank you.
Could be, right? Could be.
Uh, first off, that was awesome. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for coming to be half of kindergarten. You're just cute this year. From the two extremes of the older family, from the youngest to the oldest. Hi, this evening, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the John Roll One Plan, coming to your background of what it is, and so. So, in case you don't already know, the One Plan is for our federal funds, and it is a systematic consolidated method that we use to plan for how we're gonna spend our federal funds. It's strategically aligned. We have to make sure that whatever we put in our One Plan is what we're gonna follow through as far as allocating our federal funds. The focus of all of that is for student growth and achievement, improving outcomes for kiddos. For this. So, just some important things to keep in mind. Before we do the One Plan, there's a One Needs Assessment. There are a bulk of questions that get automatically loaded by ODE, and it depends on data that's entered through EMIS. So, for example, if we were to have a low percentage of our students graduating, then we get questions about graduation. If we are a Title I school, we're gonna get questions about how we're providing funds for our students who are struggling economically. It is a three-year plan, but it's not a one-and-done kind of thing. It's revisable at each time. It's a little bit of a process to revise it, because it would have to be rewritten. It'd have to be approved by the treasurer, the superintendent, and then by ODE each time. But at the bare minimum, bare minimum, it has to be looked at annually and updated once a year by June 30th. So, this isn't done this year. We, we had conversations in central office about how we were gonna get it done. I think, as you know, I'm completely new to all of this. So, this is a rough draft, and if things change when the new year comes on and the new Assistant Superintendent comes along, it's definitely revisable. We are submitting only two plans. We're required to submit one for the whole district, because Titles Two, Three, and Four are district funds. Two, and I think I've gone over this already, but Two is professional development. Three is ELL, and Title Four is kind of student health and wellbeing. So, those are district funds, and then we have to do one for Monroe as well, since they're only Title I there, and that one has to be done as well. So, we're only submitting two plans this year. The three focus, the three main focus, I had to look that up, that's the one. The three are in literacy, full implementation of district-approved curriculum. So, that would be foundations and integrity, and then also MTSS. And MTS is the process of, for example, if a child takes a math test in the fall, and they score about 25th percentile or below, a teen meets and decides, decides what kind of intervention that student is going to get to bring them to where they need to be. Math is also full implementation of district-approved curriculum. So, that's Bridges for Mathematics, A5, Reveal Math, we're six to eight, and then CPN, which we've had at the high school level for multiple years now. And then the last piece that we added this year, because after talking to Tom Frye, and thank you, by the way, for approving his five days, because he has been a godsend in writing this. His expertise is not only the One Plan, but looking at data, and he gave us lots of input on this. The student, was the student engagement, because looking at our, he, I'm sorry, back up. He recommended that we have one student kind of wellness focus, and he suggested, he said, "Most districts have that," because our Title Four funds are kind of connected to that. Looking at our panorama data, district-wide student engagement seems relatively low. Especially, and student engagement gets higher at the elementary. The positive responses at the elementary, elementaries are like 65% positive responses. At the high school, it's like 35%, and that's a gradual, really gradual decrease over time. So, the focus there is that every student, and this is something that some of the buildings have in place already. I know Monroe has done this. So, every student will have a person who monitors behavior, academics, and attendance, and intervenes on their behalf. It doesn't mean that, and that person can be anybody in the building. It can be a cafeteria worker, or somebody that has a connection with that student. And it doesn't mean they're providing those interventions. It's just calling somebody's attention to, hey, this is a child who's struggling. Mom and dad are divorced, and maybe nobody else, are getting divorced, and nobody else knew about that. But just making sure they have somebody who's kind of keeping an eye on that child.
Before you move on, Nikki, the, the student engagement, what is, what exactly does that mean? Because I know more than 34% are engaged in extracurriculars.
So, some of the specific questions, one of the question that always comes back to me, and there are five questions in that section. One of them is, how often do you talk about what you learned in class outside of school? So, it's how involved they, how.
I could see how that could be close to zero.
And that's a little more exciting, than talking about, you know, what they did in class, outside of class. Some other questions are, how excited are you to come to class every day, and things like that, so. So, the data that we looked at, overall, big picture, and this is very different from what we've done in last years, in past years, but it's what Tom Frye recommended to us. And that's looking at the performance index on our state report card. The performance index is that piece that says, every child gets one point if they're proficient. They get a little less percent of that if they're basic or limited. They get a little more than 1%, or a little more than a score of one if they are advanced or accelerated. The district performance index, and this is the percent of, I have to think about this really clearly. There is a max number, the max number of points that a school in Ohio got. And so, it's the percent of that math amount in Ohio. So, the district, 86.1%, it's not bad. Monroe, in particular, was 68.8% of the max for elementaries. So, the other piece of the data that we're looking at is the district map reading. It's the percent of kids who met their projected growth. So, anytime a student takes a math test after they've taken that very first one in kindergarten or first grade, they're being projected to grow a certain amount. So, this, every student at first grade who scored this, this RIT score, they're predicted to score a RIT score by the next year. I looked at winter to winter, because that tends to give us a better picture than fall to spring. It's easy to grow kids from fall to spring. It's really looking at really how they grew in a year if you look at winter to winter or spring to spring. Winter's the data I had to use, because that's our most recent data. For the district, 47.6% of students met their projection for the district, and 44.8 at Monroe. Fairly close, which tells me that they're paying careful attention to reading right now, which is a good thing. When I put the growth for this, I thought 100%, because I've never done this before. I thought 100% of kids should meet their projection. And when I sent it to Tom Frye for feedback, he's like, "The best schools get like 80%, so maybe you need to rethink that." So, I changed it. So, your data on the, what I put in your board notes is a little different than what's in the actual one. Math, math, 48.7, in the district met projection, and 36% at Monroe. And then the engagement piece for the district, 44% positive responses in that, those five engagement questions. Again, elementary, it usually tends to be higher, 65% positive responses. The other reason I included it also for Monroe is, even though their high is one of their lower scores, under 80%, a lot of their scores on the panoramic survey was above 80%, and it has fallen by like one point every time, like the last four times we've given it. So, it's definitely one we need to pay attention to. The kind of how we're going to measure how we're doing, a lot of this is going to be walkthrough data. On the piece that you see in your board notes, it says that the assistant superintendent is going to be responsible for all of this. All that means is that's not the person who is going to be doing all of these walkthroughs. That's the person who enters it into the system, who is going to be monitoring it. So a lot of it is walkthrough data. And it's just for literacy, for example, are teachers teaching the standards? Are they using integrity? Are they using CKLA Amplifying? What does that look like in the classroom? And math reading data, same with math and math reading data. And then instruction, it's going to be the same walkthrough data, but it's just ensuring that teachers are teaching what they're supposed to be teaching. And then the engagement piece, also walkthrough data, and then the panoramic survey and questions. Questions from you?
Can you explain to me the walkthrough data, how all the components or some of the components, give me examples?
So for a long time, we've had look fours that we're looking for depending on the subject area in classrooms. So help me Julie, what are some of the things you did for a walkthrough for ELA this year?
Some of them were like, are they teaching the standards? Are they implementing, you know, phonics, systematic phonics?
Do they have materials readily available to them? Because we always want to, and math, that's a biggie. Do they have manipulatives available to them at all times? So we have these look fours that we're looking through. And then I ask principals to go through and have a minimum number of walkthroughs in classrooms. And then just, and then it's either a yes or a no. They saw it, they didn't see it. It's not, it's not judging principals, it's teachers or anything.
Where do the look fours come from?
For some of them, they came from like for HED and foundations, it actually came from those systems and from that training. For Bridges, it's the same way. It actually came from that training. They will give you look fours. This is what you should be looking for in the classroom. We don't have any yet for engagement. That's something that we'll have to create because we don't have those yet.
And engagement though was predominantly focused on the panorama surveys?
Yes. And just one section.
How does the funding come into play with all of this?
So the purpose of the One Plan is to say, here are the goals for our district. Here's how we're going to focus our federal funding. So this is saying that we're going to focus on training for teachers, buying classroom materials, that sort of thing from Title I. Training for teachers out of Title II. We're going to focus on reading and math for our ELS population. And that Title Four, so that's sort of that student wellbeing piece, focusing on student engagement in classroom.
So do you have thresholds you have to meet to qualify for the funds or is this more of a guide?
This.
You're talking about funds that we already have.
Funds that we'll be getting starting this year because this is for fiscal year 2024. Actually, it's for 24 through 26.
So is this, this is our plan. This isn't what funds we're going to apply for. This is when we get the funds, how do we use them?
How we're going to use them, that's correct.
What's the best use of our funds? That's my, right?
Exactly.
But you don't have to meet, we don't have to take, say, 44% and get it to 54% to qualify the next time around or anything like that?
And that really is just for us to be looking at, are we really doing what we said we were going to do? So we continue to do data for most of these I put in that we were going to look at every semester.
I see.
Does ODE monitor this as well?
Yes. They send us frequent reminders that we need to make sure.
This is the accountability piece to make sure that we're doing what we say that we're going to do. And it can be adjusted at any time, especially during this year that we're transitioning with the new curriculum team. These things can adapt over time.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Sounds good. You guys know who Ms. Hughes is referring to when she says Tom Frye?
He was the consultant.
Beginning of this year, after I was hired, we needed a little bit of expertise in this area with Misty leaving. He's an ex, our former assistant superintendent over curriculum in several different school districts, but now he consults with schools in this area. So board approved five days for him to come in and coach us really through this, so.
Maybe Hughes in the district has a vested interest. He's just.
Oh, I know Tom. I know Tom. I didn't realize that was the same Tom.
Well, thank you for figuring this out, just being able to put it together and working with Mr. Frye.
Thanks, Mrs. Hughes. Okay, next on to public participation, known, hearing none. Next, can I get a motion to approve the March 2023 financial reports as presented?
I'll second.
Any discussion here?
Not much to add really. We're still waiting on our last tax bonus for the year. Union County and our income tax, we'll be updating the forecast this month for a summary update next month, as typical. I'm still on track. Feel good about how One finishes fiscal year financially.
Great. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Next, can I get a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented? A hundred dollar donation to the elementaries for negative accounts.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes. Okay, next we'll move on to the TOES report. You should have that in your packet. Big thing to, biggest thing today is April 26th. We have the TOES dinner. And if you haven't responded to Kathy, please do so. And then also, we just had a special meeting last week. And we approved renovation, a million dollars for renovation of, well, just short of a million dollars. 906,000 for renovation and expansion of the cosmetology lab. So that should hopefully be completed at the start of the school year. So, yeah.
So thanks for recommending this, the ReHoHeller Board meeting there last month. That was really cool. I really enjoyed that here in the studio. So thanks for recommending. That was cool.
I can't take credit for it. That was Dr. Hodley. But I, I'll certainly, I'm happy to pass along the message. I think it's a great idea. I'm a strong advocate for TOES as you know. Okay, next, policy committee update. Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Blacker?
Yeah, I'll go. We have one new policy. It's not a new policy. Well, technically it is slightly. One policy that's on a first reading and that refers to volunteers. And it's replacing a couple of other volunteers policy that we had in our policies manual. And so this covers all volunteers. But this also is being amended to add the, when it comes to athletic activities, the OHSA guidance, which requires anyone who comes to volunteer in athletics to have a pupil activity program or coaching permit that you can get online through the OHSA. So if we have people who want to volunteer in their athletics, they have to get that permit first. And then we just did some other minor edits to the policy. Before, we had like a list of, I think there were like 45 offenses that you can't, have been found guilty of and volunteer in our community. And we just took them out and basically made it more general. Like go to this statute and it'll give you, actually there's 75 offenses. So instead, we put the statute number in there, said, and made it more general. But other than that, it, there wasn't really any change to that policy. We'll have the second readings that come later in the agenda. So that was it.
Sounds good. Superintendent report, Dr. Miller?
Well, I first wanted to start off by congratulating our athletes. I know they're not with us anymore this evening, but I wanted to commend them on their outstanding performance and success. Just the way that they represent alder in just the highest regard is just really impressive. I want to thank Mrs. Page and her team for hosting the Board of Education meeting this evening. The building looked great. And I showed up at three o'clock and everything was all set up except the table costs. That's not on you, that was on me. But just the kindergartners up front doing this phonics activity and the chaining is something new to me. That was just really impressive. Cameron nailed it every single time. And I probably could use that whenever I was five years old. Thanks for arranging and setting that up. Ms. Hughes, thank you for your work on the One Plan. This year has been, you know, lots of learning, like me, lots of first times. And I know that you really, you know, put your heart into this work. And just really appreciate you supporting me and the district board. I know that it was a lot. I wanted to give the school board just a brief update on the assistant superintendent search and process. We had outstanding candidates apply for this role. As you can imagine, just like me, leaders wanting to be a part of an outstanding district. We selected a top five to interview. And then we had a next five for the next set. And then there was maybe another five to seven that applied that maybe weren't, they were the best fit for JA. But just like we expected, the top five came in front of a board or a committee of 10. It was five teachers, one from each building, and the rest were administrators. It was a very high-pressure scenario with opportunity for candidates to present to the committee how they would handle some academic data and moving forward. They were given a scenario about some instructional material, how they would put the district through a drill on making sure that we're following policy and following administrative guidelines. And then the committee asked a series of 12 questions. So all five candidates went through the same interview process. And two candidates separated themselves from the others. Now, when we were debriefing afterwards, we wanted to go back and look at every single candidate that had applied and even candidates that applied after we selected the first five. And the committee was unanimous that we were unable to go back to look through the candidates. No one, I guess, compared to the high standard and level of the two that they wanted to move forward. So out of 10 committee members, it was unanimous to move forward with those two. So I'll be putting those two candidates through another round later this week. And I'll keep you posted. In your board packets, you do have their qualifications. Then I wanted to take a minute and go on record and shed some light regarding an ongoing issue regarding two competing TIPS. Last week, there have been hours of engaging discussions with representatives from the Union County Commissioner's Office and Jerome Township. School officials have previously asked each entity to please work in collaboration and establish this uniform tax incremental financing zone between Jerome Township and Union County. This has been previous to me that this request has been made. This request is to prevent local Board of Educations from choosing one group or another, potentially damaging the long-established relationships. Building such relationships and fostering an environment of trust is critical to advancing the success of our organization. If I were updating the board tonight on the information that I had on Friday, this message would be a completely different message. As a new superintendent, I had leaned quite a bit on surrounding superintendents. Board, hours of board council. School Board President McCartney and I were learning along the way how these are long-term effects for district revenue. When experts and attorneys in this specific area state that they have never seen such dysfunction and conflict between two different tax entities, it concerned me. Last Friday, the seventh, affected school districts including Dublin City, Fairbanks, TOES, and Jonathan Allard sent a direct request to commissioners and trustees to pause any action, communicate, and collaborate with schools. You have that letter in your packet. Because each organization was sharing different proposals, it complicated matters and was going to force school boards with two proposals, two different proposals and arrangements that would impact our schools differently long-term. On Saturday, we received communication from commissioners and trustees that there would be no action for Thursdays and the hopes that there would be some compromise and collaboration before returning to present any proposals to each of the school boards. I am grateful for the position that we're in today. I appreciate that both Union County and Jerome Township have paused these tax proposals in order to return to the table and collaborate. Mr. McCartney, is there anything that you would like to add? I know that on Saturday, when we were discussing this, we were going to dive really deep into the long-term effects and what those proposals look like. But at this point, I don't believe that we dived into what they look like because there's still changes to come. And I think we'll have to assess and audit at that time.
Yeah, I think you, I think you nailed it. I think we're good.
Jim, I guess my concern, are we going to be at the table in the future? You know, these are big decisions and they affect us dramatically. And so are we going to be able to be at the table in the future?
So as, if you, if you read the response from the Jerome Township trustees, their request was as the county and the township come together for further negotiations that a representative from each district is present during those talks.
Is that, is that happening or we don't know yet?
I believe that that's, I believe that will happen. It's, I think it's for the week of April 17th. Does that sound right?
Well, I want to thank both entities and officials for pausing and allowing us the opportunity to play a role.
All right. Great, great.
That's all.
Are you good? Okay. Okay, next, we're going to move on to personnel consent items. There is a long list. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items in 9.01, 9.02, 9.03, and 9.04 as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blacker?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Yes.
On to old business. Can I get a motion to approve the adjustment to the previously approved transportation pay structure of a six-hour shift?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. I didn't understand this. Can you tell me what, what happened, what we did wrong the first?
Well, you didn't do anything wrong. I, I didn't.
I like hearing that. No, but I mean, just give me a real quick, because I feel like if you say it to me, it's easier than what's reading in here.
No, what we did is we had that included and we just forgot to put it on the sheet for voting. Is that correct?
Yes, we already voted on this last month. What we voted on is what was discussed in the executive session the month before. I forgot to put on the six-hour shifts and what we discussed with Mr. Finnick and Missy Obenies.
So the trip pay is going to be a six-hour shift?
No. There's six-hour shift in a day.
Oh, right. No trip pay.
Yeah, that's all straight time. And then what it does is by doing a six-hour shift, it goes one and a half hours per trip. So we have the morning trip of fifth grade through 12th grade. Then we have the morning trip of kindergarten through fourth grade. So we have two hour and a half trips. And then we have two hour and a half trips in the afternoon. And clarifies, so when we bring a sub in, it's very hard to figure in if I'm bringing a sub in for one person one day and their trip's not quite six hours and one person next day, they're all different. And so what this does is it just solidifies them also. It's easy to manage. And then it also gives us the opportunities instead of them, all the measured trips, it gives us a chance to assign them more trips within to use their time effectively from management. So now when we have the trips to TOES or we have the trips to Peru or wherever we go, we can use that time to fill up, to make sure that bus drivers get close. Remember when we talked last time, most, our average drivers right now are five hours and 36 minutes anyhow, I think it was. It's off the top of my head, but it was over five and a half hours. So we're close to six anyhow. And it's just putting us right there so everything's more consistent. And we just forgot to. And we just forgot to put it in on the, we talked about it, but we never put it in. Is that correct?
So that's why I was confused, I thought it was different than my understanding, but.
No, it was all part of the same thing.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. DeWaller?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Voto? Yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, next, can I, 10.02, can I get a motion to approve the policy revisions provided by Neola is provided in the second reading?
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeWaller?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Voto? Yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Okay, our next regular board meeting will be Monday, May 8th at the high school. At 5:00.
Five?
Five. Every meeting.
Sorry. See you in your moment.
I'm good, I'm good. Okay, next, can I get a motion to break for executive session for discussion of the following: employment or compensation of an employer official, the purchase or for sale of the property at competitive bidding, and specialized details of security arrangements.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Voto? Yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. DeWaller?
Yes.
And there will be no action to follow.